On this August the 19th, we are calling this meeting officially to order at 8:31 a.m. If we could all stand as we have Gary and Marcella Jenkins leading us in prayer and the pledges.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members, good morning, everyone. Let's bow our heads. Dear God, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which they live and work and play. Help us leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind us as the community, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debates today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it's their responsibilities and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. May we always be guarded by the Spirit of love. I pray for our city council members and other city officials, our first responders, that God will protect you from all hurt and harm, seen and unseen, and bring you peace through the day and week. I pray for divine protection for our children, teachers, other staff workers, that they are now back in school for their protection. I pray that our children will be hunger hungry to learn and our teachers eager to teach. And lastly, I pray for the community of San Angelo to continually love and respect each other. Lord, thank you for answering our prayers. This I pray in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
Repeat after me the pledge, please.
Allegiance allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have one proclamation this morning, so those that are here for the Economic Opportunity Act proclamation, please come forward. Are you today? Welcome, everyone. That'll be empty quarters. The Economic Opportunity Act was signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson on August 20th, 1964, marking a pivotal moment in the fight against poverty and the promotion of economic self-sufficiency for all Americans. This landmark legislation gave rise to the community action movement, empowering local agencies to address the unique needs of their communities through innovative and comprehensive programs. For the past 60 years, community action agencies across the nation have been dedicated to improving the lives of low-income individuals and families, fostering economic stability and promoting social equity. Concho Valley Community Action Agency, or CVCAA, has been a cornerstone of support and empowerment in our region since 1966, providing essential services and opportunities to those in need. CVCAA's commitment to fostering self-sufficiency and enhancing the quality of life for residents of the Concho Valley has made a profound impact on our community, helping countless individuals achieve their goals and build a brighter future. CVCAA alongside the network of 38 community action agencies in Texas and the 1,000 community action agencies nationwide continues to change people's lives, embody the spirit of hope, improve communities, and make America a better place to live. Community action cares about the entire community and is dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. The City of San Angelo recognizes and celebrates the tireless efforts and significant contributions of Concho Valley Community Action Agency and all community action agencies in their mission to eliminate poverty and promote economic opportunity by helping people and changing lives. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, do hereby proclaim August 20th, 2024, as a day of celebration and recognition for the 60th anniversary of the Economic Opportunity Act and community action in America, and urge all citizens to join in honoring the invaluable work of the Concho Valley Community Action Agency and its dedication to our community.
On behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff of CVCAA, thank you, Mayor and Council Members today. Today we gather to commemorate a pivotal moment in our nation's history, the 60th anniversary of the signing of the Economic Opportunity Act. This legislation presented a brighter future, promising economic and social equity across the United States. It is a testament to our nation's collective commitment to ensuring that every individual has the opportunity to achieve their fullest potential. Community action has been driving change and advocating for the underserved and empowering communities to overcome barriers to success. Locally, CVCAA is proud to be a beacon of hope and support those in need. Since the 1960s, CVCAA has been dedicated to improving the lives of Concho Valley residents through a wide range of services. From providing emergency assistance and weatherization programs to offering housing and utility assistance, CVCAA has been instrumental in helping individuals and families of the Concho Valley achieve stability and self-sufficiency. I would also like to mention that our weatherization director, William Ferreira, is our longest-serving staff member. He has been with CVCAA for over 24 of the 60 years that we've been doing the work of helping people and changing lives. As we celebrate this milestone, CVCAA reaffirms our commitment to the communities of the Concho Valley and to the principles of the Economic Opportunity Act as reflected in the promise of community action. Community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community, and we are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. To the City of San Angelo, the many agencies that we partner with, the community members across the Concho Valley, we thank you for your unwavering support to community action. Together, we will build a brighter and more inclusive future for all. Thank you.
We will now go in front at the 3:00 p.m. Yeah, make a move. Let's get organized. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak for the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to come forward and offer public comment? If so, please do so now.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Sharon Troy. My address is 401 Rio Concho Drive. I know that on the agenda today is the, I think it's Section K or letter K, about, you know, the grants pass thing. And what I wanted to say is, you know, I managed the Salvation Army Shelter years ago from January of 2016 through May of 17. And I know that you want the ordinance to line up with the...
Are you speaking about an item on the agenda?
I'm sorry.
Then you can't come forward on public comment. You'll need to wait until we address that item on the agenda.
So sorry. I thought it wasn't...
Thank you. That's all right. Further public comment?
Jamal Schumpert, single-member district number three. Mayor, last week, I think when I told you I wasn't in favor of LTG Group receiving a $400,000, I guess, discount, I did some more research, and I realized that we actually purchased some of our trucks from them if I'm correct. And which further leads me to say, the reason I was opposed for it is because eventually you're going to run out of space in the industrial park. And when you run out of space, they'll own that land in which they can sell. And furthermore, if Amazon decides to go into a different, you know, mode and have autonomous, you know, drivers with diesels on there, then they would have to upgrade their fleet to autonomous diesels. And if they don't do that, then they might not survive. I think more or less what I'm talking about is the vision we have in all our departments for the city, including our comprehensive plan for our planning and zoning boards of adjustments. I mean, it seems like we veered a lot away from our path. And if we get back to that path, maybe we won't be so bad off in the future. Right now, it doesn't seem bad. But if you look back 20, 30 years from now, our town will look kind of funny with 20-foot setbacks here, 10-foot setbacks there, multifamily right next to residential, that's complete blocks of residential, you just got multifamily stuck there somewhere. So it's a lot we have done in the last three years that did not follow that plan. And I just wish we would stick to that plan, especially when we're giving $400,000 cuts on property we got appraised the year before. The reason we got appraised, so we can get all the value of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we will move into the consent agenda portion of the agenda. Larry, do you want to pull an item from consent?
Okay.
Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
I'm in the pool.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with exception of item K?
So moved.
So moved by Harry?
Second.
Second by Tom. Public comment concerning anything on the consent agenda with exception of item K?
Mayor, I think the item I want to pull is number F. It includes the pedestrian bridge, about the Freezing Nichols project.
You want us to pull item F for discussion?
Is that F, Freezing Nichols? Because I don't have it with me right now.
It is.
Yes, it'd be F. Thank you.
Is that allowed?
You don't have to pull it. He can offer his comments regarding that item now if you don't want to pull it and discuss it further, or you can pull it and have more...
Just go ahead and offer your comments now.
Well, I was a little worried, well, not necessarily worried, I wanted to know where exactly would the pedestrian bridge go. I can't see exactly where to go. And I also wanted to know if Freezing Nichols was going to use the same borrowing company that I think McKeele Utility used that we were talking about last time we was up here? I was wondering if it might be cheaper for them to use them, you know, since they're already here.
Yes.
A lot of these topics you... And you know what? Public comment's great, but a lot of these things, we have the same similar questions. This agenda, these agendas come out on Thursday, and it gives us time to contact staff and ask detailed questions that go in as deep as you want to. If you want to do that, I would encourage you to go to the person that you call, and I know you're in touch with city staff a lot, but you can contact these people ahead and go through, dialing down to something that's very detailed off the, you know, we're talking a 30,000-foot view of what we're going to do, but to know the exact footing or space where we're going to put a bridge probably isn't the best time to ask that right here today. And I don't mean that to be offensive, I'm just saying, everybody has the same time to research and go back and bring those things up. And right now, we're just going to have to defer you to Shane and go do that and take up some more time. So Shane, I don't know if you want to answer that now, if it's the time, Teresa, or how do we do that?
Well, Mr. Thompson, to answer your comment, your staff is pretty busy, you're understaffed, and so when I call them, it's time before I can get to them. Sometimes it'll be before the meeting. And like you said, it's only four days. That includes a weekend. So if you do want me to talk to them, maybe you should hire more staff so that they can have time to talk to me, because I've been doing this for two or three years. Thank you.
Al is also right there, and Al is the architect working on it, so Al can answer that question.
Al, would you get with Jamal and have a conversation with him? Jamal, Al Torres is right there. If you two want to meet in the hallway and have a discussion now or later, we can address, I think, your concerns. Thank you. Okay, so I have any further public comment on the consent agenda with exception of item K? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda with exception of item K, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, we will make that approval of 7-0 on the consent agenda. We will move to item K, which is the second reading of an ordinance limiting Chapter 9, Article 9.05, camping on municipal facility or public comment. Larry?
We certainly have to pass this to be in conformance with federal state law, I understand that. But it's the devil in details, how are we going to do this? And I think parties ought at least be advised of the potential weight this puts on certain entities, such as the police department.
Well, I'd like to point out that all of our ordinances are enforced as we see fit that they're enforced. It's not a requirement to enforce it, but it gives us a tool in our toolbox to deal with issues that come up when there are people that are sleeping in our parks or camping in our parks. So there might be an increase to some extent, and we can let the chief talk about that, in their responsibilities, but for the most part, it's just an opportunity for us to be able to manage our property in a different way.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions? You want to get with the chief afterwards and discuss it, or do you want him to...
Please.
All right. Do you want to come forward and, if you would, Police Chief Travis, and maybe offer some comments about if how many times you're called to address homeless issues, or if you think this is going to create undue additional pressure and staff time?
Sure. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I believe wholeheartedly in the rule of law, but also believe in compassion. And so what we look at when we're looking at enforcing the rule of law, we look at what's appropriate based off of each circumstances and what will get back into compliance. So our officers, they care about our community, they care about the folks that we serve, whether or not they're the richest or they're the poorest, right? And so what we're looking for is to be able to have the avenue, to be able to work with our community partners to build areas that we can actually facilitate the growth and development of people that are struggling in the housing area. But we also want to have our parks in a place where our kids can go and not be exposed to some of the elements that come along with that. So that is going to be case by case. And so if we're going to try to follow a model that Lubbock Police Department has used, where they have community engagement officers that go out and they will, instead of just enforce, they'll give resources, right? But if it comes to a point where they will not comply, then we're going to make sure we get them in touch with, I mean, just what we did with Concho Valley Community Action Agency, right? We get them in touch with them, we'll work with their community partners to get the resources where we need to be. We're actually working to, on our website, we're going to try to get all of our resources for everybody, whether or not you're struggling with homeless prevention, or whether or not you're struggling if you're already in homelessness, right? If you're chronically homeless, that's another thing that takes a lot of tax dollars. So that's one of those things that, if we look at the totality between Shannon, the Fire Department, Police Department, and any other nonprofits, numbers prior to inflation was $40,000, right? Per person that's in chronic homelessness. So finding ways that we can actually help, give a hand up to those that are experiencing homelessness is important, but also the balance of rule of law and justice for our community. So it's going to be case by case. It's, I think the city attorney said it best, Teresa, is that we are looking for tools in our toolbox, because there's a mixture between those that are just good folks that have found themselves that are homeless, let's get them to the place where they need to be. Some folks are struggling with chemical dependency, and let's get them where they need to be. And I think that we're seeing some elements of this coming into play with our Veterans Court, because we have a lot of veterans that are homeless. So our Veterans Court that the county's developing will also help in that area to help them get resources more than just, we're trying to treat the source of the problem while maintaining that rule of law.
Thank you, Travis. You know, within this new ruling by the Supreme Court is relatively fresh, so there's a big learning curve that all communities are going to have to figure out. And so this is not something that on day or week two of a Supreme Court ruling that we have all the answers for.
Mayor, I do want to point out as well that we continue working with the Homeless Coalition and Mike Burnett to ensure that it's not one of the old, you know, you need to get, you need to leave this public property without a place to go either. So we'll continue doing that, and I just want to make sure the citizens do understand that this is not a heartless action on the part of the city council. We do get complaints from citizens, concerns where individuals are camping out in public parks. Our children go there and play. Just want to make sure that we're doing right by everybody, our citizens, the homeless individuals as well. And again, we continue working with Coles Coalition, and we know that we're going to see through the fruition. And again, there'll definitely be a place for them to go.
Thank you. With that, may I, further questions? Yes, go ahead, Larry. One second.
I was going to make a motion when you...
Okay. Lucy, did you have a comment first?
I just thought that lady might want to speak now on the item K. Was that what she was...
Sharon?
She was.
And Sharon Troy. I just have a suggestion. Since I know you want the ordinance to line up with the Supreme Court decision, but since the major, the Salvation Army made an announcement at last week's Homeless Coalition meeting that the shelter was going to reopen October 1st, I was thinking it, you're probably going to pass it anyway, the ordinance, so make it line up with that. And at least that way, if an officer approaches someone, they can say, well, the Salvation Army Shelter has reopened. I mean, I would give, because I want to give people every option there is. And I personally truly appreciate that the police chief does come to the monthly Homeless Coalition meetings. I think that means a lot to us in the community. And that's just a suggestion, because, you know, since the item was pulled anyway, October 1st, you know...
We have to line up with the Supreme Court. We can't ignore it. So that's not an option, number one.
Oh, darn. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make that motion now?
I'd like to make a motion. We vote on this.
Okay. The second? Second by Lucy. No, Karen? Any further public comment? All right, let's take a vote. Oh, Mike?
You know, I can't pass up an opportunity to take three minutes of your time.
You're on.
I just wanted to say, Mike Burnett, single-member District 1, speaking on behalf of the Homeless Coalition, the partnership that the Coalition has between its agencies, the City of San Angelo, the county, and the other entities that we work with has been very, very positive. The chief, Travis, he was on our Coalition board prior to becoming chief, and now he is chief and he's still on that board. And that is, that is huge for us in the way that we continue the dialogue of taking care of the people who are in the most need. Chief Griffith has spent countless hours talking with me, talking with his colleagues across the state on what, you know, how they handle the very same situations that we're handling. And I'm excited to see how that continues over the next few years, knowing that Chief Griffith is dedicating time and conversations with his staff and his officers about how to best police our entire community, but also offer that compassion. Just a couple of data points. Our point in time count this last January had 175 homeless, unsheltered homeless, 45 chronic homeless, 12 homeless veterans. The point in time count is, you know, a snapshot of one day, one moment in time. We know that number to be higher on the housing priority list of homeless individuals that we, CVCAA manages along with the Housing Authority. There's about 150, 160 names on that that are homeless, looking for a place to live. Resources are thin on that, and that's why it doesn't move very fast. And that's, that's not just us in San Angelo or the Concho Valley, that's across the country. The Coalition is working on a long-term strategy for the citizens of the community. We have a game plan. We are working tirelessly behind the scenes with the city to make sure that when we roll it out, that we are in compliance with city ordinances and state and federal law. There's a lot of conversations going on about that. If people are interested in that, they can contact me at CVCAA. We've been looking at similar solutions across the country and across the world. There are similar items that we are looking at. We're kind of taking the best practices from a lot of places and trying to bring it to San Angelo so that we can meet the need of those homeless individuals, our homeless neighbors, the people that we care for in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that passes 7-0. We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is direction concerning a proposal for 29th Street Youth Sports Practice Area from basic IDIQ in the amount of $1,461,000 for construction services. We're really anxious to have this park started.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Valenzuela. Al Torres, Construction Manager. I am here to talk about the 29th Street Project. I think you're all familiar with it, but just real quickly, I'm going to go through some slides for the public to see where we're at. The 29th Street Project is an existing set of baseball fields located, it's here, Kirby Park is right across the river, so that's going to be key in what I'm going to be asking today. This is kind of a layout of what we're doing. It's essentially four different pieces. Number one, we're going to redevelop the baseball field, we're going to develop some practice fields, add a bathroom, and then the design included a pedestrian bridge that connected Kirby Park to this new practice field. In addition to that, there were some walking trails that went, connected everything.
Where was the splash pad going?
There is no splash pad on this one.
Oh, it's on the other side.
Yeah, correct. That's Kirby Park.
Yes, sir.
Well, I could address that, but it's not...
That's okay, no. Go right ahead.
So the original proposal, when we brought this previously, was $1.9 million. Our funds are 1.558, so we were asked to value engineer with, it's a job order contracting process, so we were asked to value engineer with the contractor, see how low we could get it. So he's come back, and we're at $1,461,000. However, we, if you recall, this is a Corps of Engineer land, so through this process, we were dealing with the Corps. They approved the project minus the bridge. That doesn't mean the bridge is dead, they just want us to come back and do some more paperwork, do a cultural resources survey, and they're going to take another look at it and tell, come back to us and tell us whether it's approved or not.
Because we really want that bridge. That's a key component of tying those two together.
I agree.
So we really need to make sure we don't let this linger and that we continue to push and get the information needed to get the approval.
And just so you know, we have done that, and we will continue, but as with any government agency, this one's a little bit out of our hands, but we are...
Well, we're a government agency, so we get it.
We are, and we have submitted it in utmost fashion, but it is where it is.
Yes, I'm working with them, and I'm fairly confident that it'll eventually get approved. It's just the Corps of Engineers, they have their own timelines, it's just not telling when it's going to...
I will say, though, they did, we did get them to come down here specifically, and then one of the head guys come down, and it has helped, but anyway.
Okay.
So one of the keys is that the bridge cost, and our last estimate was roughly $250,000, but I'm using $300,000 because by the time it gets approved and done, it could be as high, you know... high, you know, roughly $300,000. The restroom is about the same cost, it was about $250,000. Again, this is just talking about the Corps of Engineer land. This is kind of an example of what the bridge would look like. It's a longer span, so it would be, it'd have a curve to it, but it's similar to the ones that we have downtown. And then this is the prefab restroom that we would have. So what we're here for is, the $1,461,000 does not include the bridge, because the bridge hasn't been approved. The contractor went back and repriced everything without the bridge. So we have to make a decision now. If we move forward with the proposal as is, that means we won't have enough money in there left for the bridge when it gets approved, so we'd have to look at funding when that time comes. If we move forward, though, we would have bathrooms, so that if, let me go back to them. So basically, as I said, the bathrooms are here, the bridge is over here. If we move forward, if we take the money for the restrooms out now, which is what we're asking, to make sure that we have enough money for the bridge, then we'll have, eventually we'll have a connection, but we don't know when that would be. But in the meantime, all the users of this side of the river don't have bathrooms. Eventually, when the bridge is done, we'll have bathrooms that are here at Kirby Park, but it's a long walk from here to there.
I don't think we're, Tom, I don't think we're interested in not doing bathrooms now, right?
No, I think it's how it goes further. He will say, "We're going to prioritize the bathroom because we know eventually we'll have to have that. We might as well take that one now, and we'll deal with the bridge when we get the approval for the bridge."
Right. And that's the option. The other option is, we go ahead and move forward as is. We'll have bathrooms, so that all the users will have bathrooms from that side. When the bridge does get approved eventually, because I agree, that is a key component of this whole project. The people that are practicing down here at Kirby Park, they, we want them to see this and be able to cross over and use it. So that is key. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen right now. It probably just makes more sense to go ahead and move forward with the bathroom and then find funding sources for the bridge when it comes. So basically, right now, we just need direction.
So my big direction is, when does it start? So it's like, how long can we wait?
I think we all share that.
So I'm hoping that if you guys give us approval to move forward with it as is, that I'm hoping to bring it back as soon as our next meeting, the September 3rd, for approval of the contract.
Tom, you want to take this on?
We campaigned on this four years ago. There's been very, some very strong headwinds in dealing with Corps of Engineers and those people to at least get the approvals. There's no need for us to wait any further when we can start now. Let's start in the down season. I know people use that all the time for baseball and soccer. Let's get started as soon as we can, put the bathrooms in, and we'll deal with the bridge when it comes. So with that in mind, I'd like to move for approval as presented.
A second by Lucy. Public comment concerning this item?
Jamal Shumpert, single member District Number 3. I'm kind of glad we're moving forward on this. I read the details, and the detail said that we thought we had enough baseball fields, and I was surprised. I was like, "Well, I guess we could start these now." But anyway, there is $11 million in the unassigned ballot fund ballots that you could use for bathrooms and the bridge, at least for the bathrooms. That would be sanitary. I wouldn't, won't.
We have, the motion includes doing the bathrooms now?
It does, it does include doing the bathroom without having to do extra funding. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other public comment? So there's a motion and a second on the floor. We'll take a vote. All in favor of getting this approved and getting it started, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, 7-0. Item B is consider and adopt a resolution directing publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation to provide funds for street improvement projects and resolving other matters relating to the subject. Tina?
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. This is familiar to all of you. This is our fifth of five planned issues for street reconstruction. The city is request, reviewing the issuance of $20 million this time instead of $16 million, and that's because we do have both the need and the capacity to do that. The certificates will be amortized over a 20-year period, and this will come back to you in October to adopt a parameters, ordinance to set up parameters around the bid process.
Just to remind everyone, this is part of the $80 million bond that was approved some time ago, and it was decided at that point in time that, is it every four years we-
Every two years.
Every two years, we issue a piece of that 80 million. So this is not new debt. It's part of the bond that was originally approved and has been responsible for us having the monies needed for the key projects that we have been working on, including Bell Street, MLK-
College Hills.
And-
College Hills.
College Hills. So this is not new debt. It's just must be approved by us to continue with using those funds that are already obligated. So this is not new. Go ahead.
That's all I have for this one.
That's all you have. So are there questions for Tina at this point?
Move approval, Mayor.
Move approval by Tommy. A second. A second by Lucy. Public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are none opposed, so that motion passes 7-0. Item C is consider and adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of city of San Angelo, Texas Tax Note Series 2024, leveling an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the payment of said note, providing an effective date in enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Tina?
Thank you. This is also not new to you. This is the short-term debt issue that we plan to issue as a two-year note before you are the ways that we plan to use the monies. We did get the bids in on Friday from the banks. The interest rate came in at 3.92%, which is excellent. I think Vince, Vince from Specialized Public Finance is here with us today as well. I think he said the two-year, or the two-year note was at 4.06% that day. So to beat that is really, really good, so we're happy with the results.
And we have approved these items before as part of our original budget meetings, so these dollar amounts are not new, nor are the subjects attached to the dollar amounts not new. But are there further questions concerning this items? The Exxon Agreement, just to be very clear, which is the big number on here, is in support of the Police Department's request for the tasers, which the contract with that has expired, and so that investment is back into our Police Department to fund their needs. So we're pleased to be able to do that. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Harry.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, 7-0. Item D is discussion and consideration of matters related to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget, including, I, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $5,960,706, or 11.66%. And of that amount, $671,739 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll, and, two, conducting a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax rate on the agenda for September the 3rd, 2024, a regular meeting of the City Council as an action item.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you just earned your paycheck on that one.
Yeah.
As you said, this is the first public hearing, an introduction of the 2025 budget. Again, this is not new information, but we do have to conduct a separate record vote for this one. So this is just some slides showing how our operating revenues are spread over all of our different funds, and additionally, the expenses by type. And then our revenues versus expense, showing that property taxes, 50% of our revenue budget, other taxes 33%, charges for service 11%, other 7%. And then the expenses, public safety makes up 59% of our budget, public works 12%, other at 12%, admin at 14%, and transfers at 4%.
The other is always an issue, so could you describe other?
I hope so. Let me see if I have that on here. Other includes, let me go back to the slide, too. So other taxes include sales tax, alcohol, alcohol beverage tax, bingo tax, and franchise tax. And on the expense side, it includes parks, development services, neighborhood and family services, health. That's it on that one.
Okay. And your charges for service, 11% on revenue.
Charges for service.
And that would be our planning department-
Public safety, public works, public services, development services, neighborhood and family services, all of those.
And the same thing then on other services, on the 12% on expense?
That, I just went-
Basically the same.
Yeah, I just went through those, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
With that, do I have questions from Council for Tina at this point? Again, these items have been covered over a series of public meetings, and you want to go through this slide, Tina?
Yes, ma'am, okay. So the budget before you today does include overtime increases for the police and fire departments, debt issue that we just went through. Police recruit is, has been converted to lieutenant per request of the police chief, and so that's just something that has to be approved through the ordinance. Part-time recreation employee was converted to full-time, and it does include the amount set aside, that $2.6 million for raises.
Good recap.
Thank you. So this is the first public hearing, an introduction again of the 2025 budget, and I do need to conduct a separate vote with this exact language.
So each City Council member will need to read the ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax on the agenda for the September 3rd, 2024 regular meeting of the City Council as an action item.
Okay, and so you, if you read it, all I need is for each one of them to say yea or nay on the approval.
So it's been read, so I'm going to start with, do I need to have the motion made first, or just?
Let me ask Heather, Heather first. So for D1, you'll need to take a motion and a second and vote. And then for D2, that would be the separate vote ratifying property tax, and then that would be individually yea or nay.
All right, so may I have a motion for D1, which is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025. This budget will raise more property tax dollars than last year's budget by $5,960,706, and of that amount, $671,739 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. May I have a motion for D1?
So moved.
So moved by Harry. Seconded by Larry. Public comment?
Jamal Shumpert, single member District Number 3. On there, I could have overlooked it, but I didn't see a full-time employee added for, I guess, the planning department for the short-term rentals enforcement?
We didn't approve that.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving D1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes 7-0. Now we will move on to 9-2, which I read. I'll read again, conducting a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax rate on the agenda for September 3rd, 2024, a regular meeting of the City Council as an action item. I will individually ask each review to vote yea or nay, starting with Tommy.
I vote aye, yes.
Tom?
I vote aye, yes.
Aye, yes.
Lucy?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Brenda Gunter? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We will now move into item E, which is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the City of San Angelo, Texas for 2024, 2025 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Tina?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, first public, first public hearing and introduction of the 2024 tax year tax rate. We're proposing that at .7544 per $100 valuation. That is a little lower than what we had discussed in the past, about .0013 cents lower than what we proposed, so an increase of just over five cents. And this is the language that needs to be read into the motion.
So may I have a motion to approve item E?
So moved.
So moved by Tom. A second.
Tom, do you mind reading the language?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7544 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 13.34% increase in the tax rate.
That's the motion. May I have a second?
So moved.
Would you read it?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7544 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 13.34% increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion, and I have a second read into the minutes. Are there any public comments to be made at this point? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Item I, second reading of an ordinance for the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise, oh, wait, sorry, I have to turn my page. Sorry about that. Item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending appendix A, Article A8.000, subsection A8.002, monthly water and water reclamation rates. And Patrick, you are on. And just for everyone to remember, we passed this earlier, right?
The, yes, so the water rates were passed during the last budget cycle. These next three items are really just a housekeeping measure for us as staff. Whenever those rates were approved last council to be adjusted, or last budget cycle to be adjusted by council, the way that the verbiage was written and the way that it was entered into the code was as a single year's rate. And so that rate technically expires September 31st of this year, or September 30th of this year. All this item is doing is it's extending those rates that are existing today until such time that council chooses to amend them again. So it allows us to continue billing until council chooses a different rate in a future meeting.
So not only does it, this housekeeping item enter into our, our budget for '24, '25, but it will be in future as well, right? So not just one year.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So questions from Council? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I have a motion from Harry, a second by Tommy. Public comment? You'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes 7-0. Item G is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending appendix A, Article A8.000, subsection A8.019, landfill charges, which Patrick indicated earlier is the same thing in terms of why we need to amend the ordinance to be inclusive of our 2024, '25 budget cycle, but also in future budget years as well.
This, this item is just a hair bit different because it's dealing with the landfill. We had a chart, a graph of the landfill rates for the first 10 years of the, of the term of the landfill contract. It goes through September 30th of this year, so all we did is we expanded that, that chart out another eight years to coincide with the collections contract. So it just extends it, so we have good transparency in what the users of the landfill would be charged for their various usages of that.
So for the next eight years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions for Patrick? May I have a motion?
Leave to approve.
Tom, seconded by Tommy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. We will move to item H, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending appendix eight, article A eight point zero zero zero, subsection A eight point zero two one, municipal drainage utility system fees. And Patrick, you are on again.
This one is exactly like the water and, water and wastewater item. Uh, it's just extending that rate that y'all approved, adopted last budget cycle, um, until such time that y'all change it again. So we'll be able to continue that billing with the current rates that are existing today.
Questions for Patrick?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, seconded by who? Uh, Harry, public comment?
Um, Jamal Shumpert, single member district three. When I was reading the documents, it said the, the life of the lot is the lease. So that means basically, we're leased up to Republic until the life, what, fifty years?
We're under contract with Republic for eight years. That was on the landfill.
The landfill, like the landfill is for the life of the lot?
We've already passed that one, so now we're on item H, which is the municipal drainage utility system?
Oh, okay, yeah, um, I've been noticing all our fees are going up for people, for citizens, even lake lot leases. Uh, but not all the fees are going up for all the, of the departments we have, like uh, planning.
No, we already discussed other departments.
Like the planning department?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I just want to focus on, if our fees are going up, hopefully we get in the correct service that's related to those fees, the, the proper service. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Item I is first reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending PD O two dash O one, a request to allow structures to be built with a fifty-foot of Ben Ficklin Avenue located at thirteen twenty-sixth the Crossing Avenue with a base zoning of office warehouse. Aaron, you're on.
Good morning, mayor, uh, city council, uh, Mr. Valenzuela, director of planning and development services, Aaron Vanoy. Um, looks like we're on a PD, so let me get to the right slides, so I make sure I get you right case. There it goes. All right, here we are. This is the, the crossings. It's a planned development amendment to PD O two dash O one. And first, I want to start out apologizing to city council and Mr. Valenzuela and to the citizens. In the report to city council, it mentioned this process, this project was amending an area that was dedicated for stormwater, and that is not correct. It is not amending an area that is dedicated for stormwater. It's amending a buffer zone that was designed for a no build and no access as far as a driveway access to Ben Ficklin. And so I will show you some slides on what this means, but this does not change any stormwater um, set aside for the, for that lot. So as you can see on this slide here, it is a request to that existing plan development to reduce the buffer to a fifty-foot instead of a seventy-five-foot buffer to allow for the construction of driveway entrances. Um, and it says for the station, this is a joint application with the landowner and the city of San Angelo for potentially, a potential site, if possible in the future, for a fire station on the south side of town, not.
Is the fifty-foot the ordinance? So does that make it not comply with the ordinance?
Uh, that's what the amendment is for, to take it from seventy-five feet to fifty feet in this PD amendment.
Right, so it really wasn't an ordinance, it was a prior planned development district.
Correct. So we're amending that distance, if it is approved. So this is in district one, Mr. Tommy Hebert, it is in the country club neighborhood. We did send out notices, we mailed out nine, as you can see, it doesn't touch a lot of property. There was one in opposition, um, the properties here just to what I'm going to call the west, uh, across Ben Ficklin. Um, those are vacant property now, right now, but the main concern, this person has owned those properties for a significant amount of time, there's a significant amount of stormwater that comes through that area. Uh, it happens just to come from anything that's being graded down, it's all angled down going to the South Concho River that's continued on to the west. You can see there are others in that Pecan Valley Lane area that also have opposition, and it's, the opposition is about stormwater runoff. Again, I want to remind you all that the, this is, this is not changing a stormwater requirement for that lot, and it is not reducing anything that had to do with stormwater, uh, with this amendment. So here's the concept plan on the left, that was the original concept plan. If you notice this little thin piece right here, it's labeled area A. That is the area in which we are reducing from seventy-five feet to fifty feet and would allow access, as you can see, to Ben Ficklin Road right there. Um, it would come across that way. Now, all of us that um, understand how water flows, it's going to the lowest point. Obviously, when you put a drive access there, that may allow more water to flow towards Ben Ficklin and on down to South Concho. And so that's the concern for residents in that area. Here's the zoning map on the right, uh, you can see the planned development, you see single family, and then you see ranch and estates, and then of course, there's uh, heavy commercial across the uh, the highway on the other side. You can see this is a large planned development, they started down here with a residential area. These three are storage building areas, and they had an area B that was a buffer zone that's also be, uh, has, that is where they chose to do their detention for their developments for those areas. It was not required as a stormwater area, but that's where their detention uh, chose to be based on their drainage study when they did those. Right here is the state of Texas, um, has a facility, and then you can see um, area one is a large area, but we're taking out that piece right there, which is about two point nine acres. So here on the right again, I, or on the left again, I kept the concept plan there just so you can try to visualize. You can see here, uh, the plat that was done in 2017 that created lot three and lot four. And I've got a zoom in just of that plat. You can see right here is a seventy-five uh, foot buffer. You can see, barely just see right there, that area from the uh, corner is eighty-five feet, so that leaves a ten-foot driveline off of the crossings. That's one of the concerns of being able to access this site. And so if there is a driveway somewhere in here, it does allow you to access Ben Ficklin Road. Uh, some of you may see this odd shape right there. We had to do some digging, but that is actually been dedicated to the state of Texas, and that's the old Ben Ficklin Road. Uh, is right there, just a weird little cutout there. Um, but this is the lot, you can see it's an irregular shot, uh, lot, two point nine three, uh, two point nine seven three acres. This is the access road over here where they would have access, they are asking for access here. This lot has not developed in twenty-two years, um, and so that could be part of the reason, it may not be part of the reason. It could just be economics and uh, where this lot is located. But access is, I think, a, a challenge for this lot, no matter who decides to utilize the lot.
Because currently, there's only one at, entry point, and that is Ben Ficklin Road?
Uh, no ma'am, you have, right now, you currently have access here off the access road. If you're very lucky, you could get an access right there, which would be probably pretty challenging. Um, but right now, the only access is off the access road. There is no access under the current planned development on Ben Ficklin. So this, this um, planned development would reduce this line, move it this way to fifty feet, and allow an access somewhere on Ben Ficklin Road from this property.
So if you left that property going to Ben Ficklin Road, then you drive over to where to hit eighty-seven?
Depending, well, really if you're going north or south, but the design and um.
Or the loop?
The loop would be coming back here to the crossings to get back to this access road, where you can go across the highway, the, of an overpass, and go down Bryant, or go around on loop three oh six, or you take the access road down to Grand Canal and access to seventy-seven going south, or eighty-seven going south.
Cause that Grand Canal is a real major problem already.
Yes, that is a challenging intersection for our community, yes ma'am, that's south of this area. So here we took a picture, standing at the Pecan Valley Lane. This is that area that's right between the RS one and the R and E. And you can see here, the land here on the left is significantly higher than Ben Ficklin Road. And so this is a dirt entrance right there. Down here, a little further, is the actual, the crossings, uh, the paved entrance. So I just wanted to give you that perspective.
So, go back to that picture.
Yes, ma'am.
So the water that comes off of there goes where? Cause it's higher, so it's going to drain down?
It drains down, currently, cause it's undeveloped land, it doesn't have to contain its water coming off of, off of its land. So there, that water does flow that way, trying to get to the South Concho River.
Had there ever been flooding issues on this property?
With residents, uh, one resident did come to planning commission, they did state that, that currently that is a situation. Um, I know that there are other residents that have that voiced that concern, that this area can cause flooding to the west.
And so what's our answer for that?
Well, once it becomes a developed piece of property through the development process, there is requirement uh, to create a drainage study and, and design the lot to mitigate any water runoff from that lot.
So how much additional expense is attached to that process?
Unfortunately, I'm not educated enough to know that, that would be an engineer that might have an estimate, but it can be very costly at times. Um, it is two point nine uh, acres, and so you're mitigating water runoff for two point nine acres.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That area over there looks like a berm more so than a uh, a complete raising of that property. Is it, is it the entire piece of property?
It is, it is sloped from this end, trying to slope water to drain back towards um, the access road. I've got some overhead shots in just a moment that I'll be able to explain some of that. So this is looking the opposite direction, looking north. Here's the crossings, there's the paved alley, but you can kind of see, while this looks like it goes up, it really doesn't go up, uh, it is just kind of uh, stable there, and then it drops down as it gets to that curve that turns towards the South Concho River. But here you can see, and I think you can see here as well, Councilman Miller, you can see that that line is pretty flat going across there, where the topography is angling down.
Well, the, the red line that you just drove, yeah, it goes down, but that other road that you showed doesn't look like it, it looks like it goes up, not flat. It goes up, and then it might flatten out, but it goes up first.
Yes, it's definitely up inclined right through here, um, which would be really the right-of-way area uh, for Ben Ficklin Road, and then the private property starts about that area and comes back. And it is a slight incline, which means that water does come back to the west. So here's a big overhead view, obviously you see the Concho River, here's the subject property, here's a, a detention basin, and here's their, the previous development's detention area along Ben Ficklin. Uh, you can see where water has, and they have developed along this private road, kind of a drainage area that comes back this way, because there is a significant amount of water that comes through there. And that's really because that's a paved entrance, water flows over pavement much better than, than dirt and gravel, and it comes across there trying to get to that lowest point, trying to get back to the Concho River. But today, we're talking about the width of a buffer zone, changing from seventy-five feet to fifty feet, and allowing a drive access to Ben Ficklin.
So this isn't just a zoning request?
Well, that, that would be within the planned development zoning. The underlying zoning is office warehouse, which would allow an office building, it would allow, allow self-storage like here. Um, in that zoning, safety services, which includes fire and police, are allowed by right. And so there's nothing in the actual underlying zoning that would change if this became a site for a fire station in the future. The only way it's usable, according to our fire chief, is that he's, has some access there, and he's able to fit the structure to where mu, ninety percent of the time, they're driving out to the access road to get to a fire quickly. They may come in and circle here and come into the back of the station that way, but they would not be leaving out going on Ben Ficklin. But without that extra twenty-five feet, his building does not fit.
Yeah, for me, I have no issue with the request for today, but I do have a big issue relative to additional costs that would be included in development of this land for um, the police, I mean, for the fires. So it seems expensive to talk about the drainage issue and et cetera, but that's not what we're talking about today, so we're only talking about the fifty, seventy-five to fifty um, feet. So that piece I can support, but I have real concerns about the cost of developing this land.
Mayor DeBao May, uh, I know this is not the fire department issue right now at this point, it's just the change on the plan development. But on our end, since it was mentioned, uh, we do a cost uh, analysis to determine what all that's going to, what all that would be for us. Because it's not just the, the drainage study, it's the land improvement, it's the landscaping, that would have to go in there as well. So the chief is very well aware, we've talked about that, so we will not move forward if it's prohibitive, too cost prohibitive at this point, so.
Other questions or comments from council? May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Harry?
Second.
Seconded by Tommy, public comment? Well, there aren't any, but I cut you off before you did this, go ahead and read these items, sorry.
That's all right, mayor. So with that planned development change, these would just be the five conditions, which were original conditions except for the site lighting, because in two, uh, two thousand and two, we did not really talk about site lighting at that time. Again, it's just saying that the site lighting will be shielded and won't escape the property. Again, we do have that significant residential area there to the west, and we don't want that to be a, a problem in the future. A parking plan and landscape plan has always been required for this piece of property. Um, we just wanted to reiterate with future development will be the responsibility for the improvements to the entrance and exit areas, the drainage and road access, so that anyone that is looking at that area, they, they're aware of those things. Uh, those types of things, and again, we wanted to reiterate that just a drainage plan is required for, for this property to develop in the future.
Sorry for doing what I just did, thank you. All right, so there is a motion and a second, um, and I'm, will ask if your motion supported these um, recommendations from the staff?
Yes.
Okay. And the second as well. With that public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. Item J, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance for PD two four dash O four, Shriner's Point, a request to rezone a property on the one thousand block of East Foria Street from single-family residential to a planned development with a base zoning of single-family residential. Aaron, you're on again.
Thank you, mayor. Again, city council, Mr. Valenzuela, uh, director of planning and development services, Aaron Vanoy. This is a planned development for Shriner's Point. Um, many of you on council have seen this project a few times in the past. Um, this is a planned development um, for that twenty-three acres to allow it to continue to build a single-family residential. Um, that will change the, the allowable areas on the lot for a house to be built. And I'll get to those details in just a moment. So this is twenty-three acres in the Lakeview neighborhood, district two, Mr. Tom Thompson. The vision plan is neighborhood, and this is a request from a single-family residential to a planned development with the base of single-family residential. And I think that's very important to state again, is that it is staying single-family residential. Uh, it is not going to multifamily or any of that type of uh, zoning designation. But here you see our um, current zoning on the left and our uh, vision plan on the right. So single-family residential and neighborhood. We did send out fifty notices to the properties around, and we did not receive any in support. We did send out 50 notices to the properties around, and we did not receive any in support and any in opposition. So here's what we're doing within the planned development. Our normal front, front yard setback is 25 feet. We are changing that to 20 feet, and that'll be uniform across all the lots on the, on the property. The rear setback will go from 20 to 15. Now, each of these properties that back up, back up to another property, there is no alleyway, so there's really about 30 feet between the residents being built. All the corner lots, usually in our ordinance, if there's no alleyways, corner lots say that you have two front yards, which means you have a 25 setback on one side and a 25 setback on the other. What we are doing is we are reducing that to be just like a normal lot, so you have a side, we're calling that a side yard as 5 feet. Now, within this, all those roads and everything will have the 50-foot right-of-way, and they have a 5-foot utility. And so they're really going to be 15 feet back from the road, from the roadway, so people can still actually see what's going on there. The maximum floor area ratio is usually 40% for a single-family residential lot. We're asking it to go to 50% of lot, of the maximum floor area ratio. And again, the RS-1 standards would apply everywhere else. So here's that plat. So you can see Blum Street is major north-south street that they will be constructing, and then you see these side streets that come off. So on these corner lots, particularly along Blum Street, you see there, wherever those are, and at the ends, that's where you'll have those lot, the house will be faced to the local street. The side yard will be on that Blum Street. There will be a 5-yard setback. And you can see with, and it's very hard to see on this image, but if you have the plat in front of you, you would see where the right-of-way is and that utility easement is that allows that house to be pushed back. And that's why they needed, if you had a 25-foot setback on that side, you're building a very narrow house, which this, this development would not be able to support. So we're doing that throughout this development. We're allowing this to continue to move forward for the developer that is working all of these lots. They have done a number of lots on the north side of town, and they're ready to start moving forward in this area. And so we're very excited that they continue to bring a housing product that our, our community needs. Again, here's our staff recommendation for approval. They would stay the RS-1 standards except for this chart here. All of those lots are already exceeding the 5,000 square feet, and some of, and many of them exceed the 50 by 100, so there are no lots that are smaller than that. But that also means they really can't go and split one of those lots into something smaller. We have changed the minimum front yard to 20 from 25. The interior lot line is always 5 feet as it is. The double frontage side, we are now going from 25 to 5 feet. The rear yard from 20 feet to 15, and the maximum floor area ratio from .40 to .50. The only condition that we're doing is that we've asked the applicant to work with operations to implement the requirements for the installation of the detention ponds, and that's simply, the operations teams ask that we need to be able to get into those ponds a certain way, because there's just certain areas, and they just want to work together to do that. And the applicant is amenable to that. With that, are there any other questions?
Tom, I'm going to let you speak first.
It's been a long time coming, since about we initially started Kirby Park in about 2017. Just a little history on it. Once this was looked at to be a two-story, a multi-rise, and the district, several of the constituents were highly against that, it set for a while, came back. The best way for this to work, to make the houses look wider, broader, and fit, was to make these setback changes. I'm all in favor of this. Nobody has contacted me against it. I've had two or three contact me, say, at least we don't have the high risers or the apartments. I haven't heard any objections to this, and I would move to approve as presented.
Second.
A second by Tommy. I'm going to talk about how important I think it is for this development to happen. We need workforce housing. That is one of the number-one big challenges we have in our community, and it's called workforce housing, of houses that the public can afford to purchase. And this development, which is several years in getting here, I'm thrilled that they have started the process and that they have looked at further development and investment in this part of San Angelo. It's so needed, not only in terms of this location, but for workforce. And I'm thrilled to support the changes and look forward to the development of this project. So there's, yes, Tom?
Just one question. This is a little prickly question, so, so pardon me. I know we had an issue on a case several months back with a chart that was inserted into this very same type situation, and there was an error. And it caused, inadvertently caused an issue. I know you read through these publicly, but those are all correct. We're not going to have an issue with that come back like we did on that other situation, will we? These are all correct as, as shown to us here?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Did, did I get a second on the motion?
Ma'am, I did.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes, Larry?
Just to put it in perspective, what's the difference between these and patio homes?
Well, a patio home usually is a zero lot line home, that they would have a zero side on one of the lots and 10-foot on the other side. And then basically, there's kind of a maintenance easement to go and work on your side of that house, but then they're all set of, all right, which side is the zero lot line, and it stays that way. This is still going to be a single-family home that's centered within the lot, but it's going to be a little more front, to the front. Their house design allows it to be a little wider, so they actually have a little more space in the backyards and the side, not the side yards, but the backyards.
Thank you. Is the, the park that's consistent or available to this neighborhood, is that Kirby, as Mr. Thompson said?
That's a great question.
Well, you've got Producers, too.
Like I said, there's Producers Park that's over there. I'm not sure what other parks are in this part of town, to be honest with you. I would have to look at that.
The one travelable motion, Larry, would probably be to Kirby.
Yeah. So you don't see the need for any additional park dedication with this project?
From this development, no, but in that area of town, yes.
The number-one thing here is affordability. That's our number-one challenge as a community, is affordability. We had a meeting last, two weeks ago, Tom and I, and I'm telling you, the number-one thing is affordability. We have a big open hole for affordable housing. So using the land wisely, economically, and providing this type of house is so key right now. It's very, very key. All right, with any further questions or comments? All right, well, is there a public comment on this item? With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item K, first reading in public hearing of an ordinance Z-24-05, a request to rezon from low-rise multifamily residential to general commercial located at 5129 West Houston Hart Expressway. And Aaron, you're on again.
Thank you, mayors, city council, and Mr. Valenzuela. Again, Director of Planning and Development Services, Aaron Vanoy. This is a simple rezoning that we have here right off the Houston Hart Express frontage road. You can see that there's a utility substation behind it, TLC-A is over here, and then the Bluffs neighborhood here. This is the Honda area that developed a few years ago. So this area is .613 acres. It's requested to go from a low-rise multifamily being RM1 to general commercial being CG. In District 6, Mr. Larry Miller in the Bluffs neighborhood. So here you can see, the vision plan is for this area to become commercial anyway, and it really is looking at, because there's that utility substation, this property is elevated a little higher than everything in the back, back there. You can just see where the drainage kind of comes through and goes across Stafford back there. Being RM1, had it developed that way, that might have been really helpful to add some more housing, but it just hasn't done that. We have a buyer that has come in and purchased the land. He wants to put it as general commercial to see if he can find somebody that he can build a tenant space for. You can see here our current zoning on the right, where it's low, low-rise multifamily, just has not developed in that manner. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning from low-rise multifamily RM1 to general commercial. Planning Commission recommends approval with a 5-0 vote from back in July, and with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Aaron?
Did you have any comments?
Larry, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you send out letters to folks asking? I'm just curious whether you had any positive or negative?
We did send out letters to the 200-foot notice. There was one somewhere right in here in Lindhurst. They were concerned about water runoff, and of course, that will be a design element that they will have to incorporate into their development. That was their only concern, because it is a higher elevation, and water could potentially run off back there. The developer is aware of that, and they're actually looking at doing some detention areas and walls, and trying to get water to come this way instead.
Thank you. May I have a motion? So moved by Tommy. Second by Karen. We got it. Public comment?
At Ginger Moore, 4178 Ruby Lane, San Angelo, Texas. That runoff is a concern, and I don't want them to say they recommend that they'll do it. I want them to say that they will do something about the runoff, because it will run off the street. I have a house high up, and it all goes down, so, yeah, just a thought.
Thank you, Ginger. Any other public comment? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item L, first reading in public hearing of an ordinance for Z-24-06, a request to zone and unzone tract a single-family residential in conjunction with a prior approved annexation located in Bentwood Country Club Estates, a 22.096 acre tract located east of Riviera Lane and Clubhouse Lane.
Thank you, mayor. City council, and Mr. Valenzuela. Again, Planning and Development Services Director, Aaron Vanoy. You've seen this, this site before with the annexation coming in, bringing in a new area to the Bentwood Country Club area. It's just over 22 acres. I don't remember exactly how many lots, because they haven't quite, they just have a preliminary plat, don't have a final plat yet. This is in District 1, Mr. Tommy Hebert, and the, it is a, a neighborhood vision plan, or the neighborhood is Country Club, and the vision is neighborhood. So you can see here with our comp plan, this area, even the area that's outside the city limits, we have a comp plan that's been recommended. This being neighborhood, coming in a single-family residential is appropriate. There it goes. I think I went one too far. So here is that area, the 22.096 acres. You can see all of this area just south of that cul-de-sac right in through here, and that, and this north side of that road there is what's coming in. Will all be single-family. Notice that some of the lots are a little bit larger, so they are looking at some larger lots than the normal RS-1 size, but currently, it is RS-1 that they're requesting through this application. This did go to Planning Commission, and they do recommend approval with a 5 to 0 vote, and staff also recommends approval of this zoning request from a unzoned area to being zoned RS-1 single-family residential.
Tommy, it's in your area. You want to talk?
I think this is just following the process, the, we've started the annexation process, and this is just the next step in the process. I'd move approval as presented.
Second.
A second by Harry. Any other questions from city council? This is a zoning request. This isn't a-
Please.
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of entertainment access to the people in Bentwood, but I just asked councilman, councilperson Hess whether there was any real parks there.
There are not.
Remember, this is a zoning request. That's all this is, is a zoning request.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Public comment? Take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. The closed session, executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551. Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding A Plus or Minus 11.82 Acres Located at 742 West 14th Street. Item B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 72 East Avenue D. And Section C, Section 55, or C, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding U.C.R.A. Agreements. At this point, we adjourn from the reg, from the regular agenda meeting, and we will be back when we finish the conversations. To order at 10:48 a.m. on this August the 19th. There are no announcements that need to be made concerning our closed-session conversations, which means we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues. Announcements in consideration of future agenda items, are there any from council? With none, may I ask for a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn.
Any opposed? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are officially adjourned at 10:48 a.m. as well.